I know that Jesus will get an attitude that are very eh temporal. And I know that facilitators, you should be at hard questions now.
And we don't last.
Alright. Alright, the way you relate to other people, thank you. We'll go straight to the heart now. The heart, the heart says, no, no, let's, let's move on. They say we should move to the heart. The heart says, what is my attitude? In the heart, we are talking about your application to your heart. How does it get to you, the matter we are talking about? Praise the Lord. Can we hear me? Now, we are going to an application of this. Because a lot of believers may know what they ought to do, but they do not in by bit. That is the reason why we have to look at how we can get these words into our hearts. Amen. Alright, question there saying, how does cultivating a heart of compassion, kindness and humility shape our attitude towards others? Are we there? How does cultivating a heart of compassion, kindness and humility shape our attitude towards others? It's a question from the tests, from Corinthians and Colossians. Make your contribution. And when you are talking to me, ay. Yes, sir. No, no, you have spoken before. Somebody else. Somebody else who has not spoken. From, from the back, from here, somebody who has not spoken. Ma, you wanted to say something before. Maybe you can say it now. Tap, tap her. Yes. Maybe you can, you can, you can contribute on this matter.
You said, you must not say anything, everything, but sometimes you can come out and preach what, what you are preaching is wrong.
Yes.
It's like, it's shaped by attitude. My brother, sometimes the word of my mouth, my attitude, my attitude, my character, it's hard to tell. So it's, it's, it's shaped with it today that if I must not say anything, everything, it's sometimes you can come out and preach what, what you are preaching is wrong.
It's not, ay, ay, ay.
Who I am is what is speaking to them.
Yes.
More than my voice.
So, alright, how, how does, he said, how does this change your attitude? Your attitude towards, let me ask you a question. Have you ever seen a person maybe smoking and sagging? And you try to preach to the person? And he responds to you in a way that, okay, forget that thing. Maybe go say. Now, we first start church. I don't do a YF. We don't do and drop him. That kind of person, like, trying to make you look like the fool and they, the wise. How do you still go on relating with such a person? That's what this is talking about. Yes. How do you, what attitude do you portray to that person? Has anyone here tried to evangelize before? He tried preaching to somebody and, eh, so why talk now? Say something. Eh, eh, say something.
Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
So, um, personally, I've had that experience. So I had like, um, I, I used to teach lessons for him. So their uncle, he doesn't go to church. They tell me that in fact God, you know, just look on my person outside. So I had a conversation with him once, and then he said that, he actually said he's an Anglican, so he grew up in America. So instead mentioning everybody and rest of them, that they went to church, church is politics, church is all that. So I told him that it was not something that we're going to break down to decide in a day. Do you understand? So, ah, what I did at that point was, I, I tried to be persistent and consistent in what I was saying to him. So I just told him that what you may have experienced might not be the only thing you try to do. So his constant communication with him, me just showing him that being a Christian is not about condemning you for your reasons and leaving church. So and in later stage, after a very long time, I was to go for his son's birth. And ignorantly and mercilessly, I, I came out and he came out like, that's the point. So sometimes, we try to do some, sorry, sometimes I try to do so much of talking and forget the fact that people look forward to your actions more than your words.
Thank you. Hallelujah. Thank you. So, how would you relate to somebody? Let me to use this thing. Where pause feet for your eye? When you go preach? You go pause feet for your eye. Would you still have a kind heart towards that person? Or will you switch into only anger towards that person? These are practical matters. Yes, sir. Just.
One of the ways, one of the ways this will affect you is that I will not get angry in this way. Knowing that I've set my affections towards a person, I know that getting angry in this case is not worth it and it's a waste. So instead of getting angry, I try to hear what God is saying in my heart. Sometimes, you know that you not know it, but that situation, you just read what is in your heart. And unless you are heavily conscious, you see yourself laying what is in your heart. So in that point in time, that is when God usually tells me, see this one, see this one, don't let it come out. See, you are having issues here. And you see myself, after the whole situation, I say, ah, I almost fell. See, this thing, so this anger is still here. That's where it starts coming to me, that you need to work on anger issues and that. The only way to help.
Thank you. Hallelujah. Alright, no, we'll go to the next. So I will not spend so much. I said, now, what does this reveal? Maybe you comment there. What does this your attitude now? What does he reveal about our relationship with God? He was already trying to hit it. So you just.
Amen.
Amen.
I just want to quickly share an experience I had with a wife who I've changed. I spoke to some person, and then I met a group of, just beside the person I was just meeting. I met a couple of their partners. So they were there listening to me. Sometimes I walk up to them. One of them, they're saying, this one that I want to do, go talk to him and tell me anything about Jesus. Just buy for me water, just buy for me water. I hardly even approach them completely. I'm already raising my voice at him. This one is not her business. No, um, one of the ladies was trying to ask him, I can't understand, no, this one talk to me about, for me to find you a partner. And then I went to her that because I, I left, I was just walking, I just got me. So I wasn't even holding money, no ATM. And then I was just, God, what do I do with this person? So I turned and then I saw someone I go from church. And I said, sister, please don't have a motorcycle, let's get home. So she gave me, then I bought water. And I said, I'm sorry, you're thirsty, but I appreciate it. So she took it and she was cold, instantly. And then I said, well, this is just, I feel like this is water.
Yes.
So you just have this. When, when I was drunk, she was looking at me, oh, I'm expecting that she wanted me to react, how to get angry. But then I just said, I just want to tell you that Jesus loves you. And he is also concerned that you are thirsty. That's why I came here. That's why you put a lot of attitude, but that's not on our end.
Yeah, amen. Yes. So, it, now, how does this show your relationship with God? One more comment. How does this show your, your, this attitude now has been portrayed? How does it, how does this speak about your relationship with God? One person just made a comment. Yes.
Hallelujah.
Amen.
This attitude we're talking about. There is no way I will say I love you when I do not love my brother I'm seeing. So the heart of compassion, the heart of kindness I cultivate and I show towards the person I see shows very well that, yes, I can now relate with God. Because if I do not love this person, there is no way I will claim to love God and love him.
Thank you. Thank you. I hope we all get that point. I hope we heard him. We'll move to the ay, ay. As an ambassador for Christ, how should your heart reflect an attitude of reconciliation? And a desire to lead others towards God's truth and love? As an ambassador for Christ, how should your heart reflect an attitude of reconciliation? And a desire to lead others towards God's truth and love? Yes. You have spoken. I need somebody who has, yes.
Alright, praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
As an ambassador, as an ambassador of, um, Christ, yeah, people might offend me or I might be in that situation where people criticize God. Well, I know that it is, it is not my duty to fight for God. God will handle the battle. But also, I have learned to let people know that I will not place myself in that position again where you despise this, um, this person I am in Christ because I'm a Christian and then I'm expected to be humble. I will put myself in that position. I will avoid any, any situation that will make you look down on me or possibly insult the, the gospel that I preach. How? I will not react immediately. I won't react immediately. But later on, I will come to you and speak to you that this thing you have done, this insult. This, this thing you have done is wrong. And you shouldn't, and you shouldn't, um, you shouldn't take advantage of people's humility or kindness to, you don't, you don't just take advantage of people's kindness or good attitude. And the fact that God is being merciful does not mean we should keep living in sin because we feel we will always, um, obtain grace for, from him. Amen.
Amen. Alright, let me, let me, let me, let me ask this. Have you ever gone to preach to somebody? For instance, where I come from, Yahoo is on the high side. Yes. I was in campus evangelism, talking to some young boys. They were doing screening, year one screening. I approached them and I was speaking to them. This, this guy is not up to twenty, maybe eighteen. And he told me, why do I need God? I have a car. He came with his car. He drove his car to school. I have a car. I have a house that I built that I'm living in. I have lands. What do you have?
You and your God. You and your Jesus.
Do you, do you understand? What do you have? And he just, he just is in year one, this screening, I'm in final year. So, now, in such a situation, what would you do? Would you still continue to preach to that person? Would you turn away? Or would you not begin to? You would go to hell because of your riches. You know, there's a way you begin to preach now and. He knew of you, yeah. I, I laughed. I laughed at him and he was surprised. And I, and I, I said, what shall it profit a man if he gains the whole world and loses his soul? And I asked him a question. Do you know that there are persons who had a lot of things, just as you said, and they woke up and in less than one hour, everything gone? One evil uncle sees your land, butcher him, you enter, you die. Your house will catch fire. Your land, they, they, they separate in land. They go separate, they'll say, this land is not for sale. Be aware of 419. Now 419 seller. So, I, they, I said, before you know, in one hour, everything you have will go. Do you know, say that means that you can't, you can't count yourself what did because of these things that you had? And I began to talk to him, began to talk to him. I said, when last did you go to church? He doesn't go to church. That he don't, he cannot remember when he went to church last. He's a boy not up to eighteen, maybe eighteen, not up to twenty. So, in such, for me, because I know, I see him as a dead man walking. You, you cannot be angry at a dead person that you are trying to bring back to life. I persisted and persisted until I was able to crack him and he gave me his number. And I told him, I will invite you for church. And he agreed. And they were three. You see the way, my, my colleague that we came, they left me and went. You see, if you say one thing, they will, the worst thing, they know Bible. They know Bible, like, they, because they read, they read Bible as ordinary test, so that they can find fault. And we talked to a point and he was like, where was God when his father died? And I knew that there was a hurt that led him to that point. Not that when he was born, he was born not knowing God. So, me having a knowledge that this person needs help and I will go any extent to present help to him. It helped me not to, you know, the devil is a script writer. Okay, you want to preach to this person, no Allah. He will write the script in a way that the person will provoke you and you get anger. And at the end of the day, you end up not ministering to the person. You say you fall out of faith because you went to preach. So if you follow the devil's script, you are at his play. Amen. Let's not dwell here. Let's continue. There is a section there that says, for living a life that represents Christ. Can somebody help us to read it? A fast reader.
Living a life that represents Christ.
Okay, sorry, let, let her.
As Christians, we are proud not only to be in Christ, but also to represent in mere good aspect of love. Family makes sweet pleasures, and carries our heart. Let's reflect this kind of harmony, a tissue for a one. The sober Christians have changed. We are forced to apply the sizes that we are ambassadors of Christ. And intentionally we return to Christianity and provide the Christ to us, provide new us as God. By setting our hearts on face and face, and helping Christ live.
Thank you. Thank you. So, sir, we are not only just believers, we are ambassadors. We are sent to represent Christ. When you, at your own, um, personal time, you just take time and read up all those, number one, understanding, uh, role as ambassadors and just read up all that. We don't have the luxury of time to read up all. Now, we'll go to the, the discussion, the hands. The hands. Hands talk about, how can I obey? Having known that I'm an ambassador and having known that it, you will, it is, it is, it is inevitable that you will meet people who will, who will try to, they know what you, they know your standard. But they will still try to pull your legs. Now, how can you obey and stick to the plan of God as an ambassador? So we go to one that says, how can I actively reflect Christ, um, Christ's love and compassion in my daily interactions with others? How can I actively reflect? Reflect is not, how do I put it now? It is not create. Reflection casts something that is already shining forth. I don't know if you understand. The, the screen of this phone is the way you put it to the sun. And when I point it to you, it will reflect this. Or it's not the one generating the sun. It is just showing forth what it received. So as a Christian, as an ambassador, how can you actively reflect God's love and compassion in your daily interactions with others? Especially those who may be difficult to love. Yeah, yeah, there's a condition now. Especially those who may be difficult to love. Yes. Yes. Hallelujah. No, ay, ay. Yes. No, 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 sorry, sorry. You have been holding Christ already. Now how can you pass it? The issue now is not between you and God. The issue now is from you to the destination. Do you get me? You are reflecting, so you have received already.
Pipeline.
You're, you're showing forth now. How can you actively show forth that which you are already receiving? Okay. Okay. Yes, thank you. I, you have, you have spoken. You have, yeah, give, I give the lady in, yes. Have you, it's like you have spoken before.
For me to show, the, the things are Christy.
How? How? Give me example. How?
I'm a teacher. I do understand whenever people is weak or change weak, I always cross them. To me, I know that something is wrong. You are my friend. I'm asking you, you are, you say yes. And I will give thanks. I'll give you my amen by all due diligence. It's something that I do go to, to try to fight. It's doing that I'm applying the Christ on, to the love of Christ towards me, towards that person.
Thank you. The next person is speaking now. I want you to hear the issue of those that are hard to love, that are difficult to give the value. Those that are difficult. People, people are difficult to.
Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
Actually, I'm, um, um, basically based on this law called death. I work in an ICT company. I know ICT. It's very present of us, don't you? You don't go to church. Because one, you travel as always with your friends or your assistant, and you're always at work. My sister, last week, we did a business, the guy lost over seven hundred million. He came to the office to work, I was like, are you the one? He said, lost, one hundred million. I said, lost seven hundred million. And I was laughing. I said, me, God, I've lost almost nine hundred million. Your God's dividends. You see how?
Facilitators, go to Hans' places. Hans' place.
I've been talking to him last week, he was telling me to pay that money.
You should be dealing with Hans now.
Connection, as you're online, you can also teach other people one or two things when they're getting one. As I did it. Um, the effects not only us, many people have this issue. Do you understand?
Thank you.
But the way you relate to your fellow brother, that's the same way God also.
Hallelujah. Give, give to this sister at the age.
Have a practical example.
Yes.
My station, my neighbor.
Please, how you are from the back? How you are from there? Okay, please.
Okay, have a practical example. In my station, you have said me, my neighbor. This guy is a good guy, but he's very, very hard and he's so loud. Sometimes, if I cook, because I'm tired, I, I normally shake his foot. Maybe I'm just with food loss and my neighbor is with me. So this is my particular neighbor. He doesn't like meat, but meat I like him. And if I'm giving others food, if I walk past his own door, I will feel guilty. And he will be looking at me at the beginning. So there was a day, I took it off my head, said that this guy, he was cooking my food. And if I'm giving others, we just be looking at him like, ah, ah, they're just giving to others, we cannot give it. But he don't like me, don't have any respect. But official expression is showing that, like, we take person. So on this particular day, I, I gave him food. After I took his food away, so I went to my home room. So I came outside, my man was saying to me that he's a coke outside. When I came outside, I saw the place outside. I opened it, it was empty. I just, I just smiled. I was like, I, I continued doing it until I came here to eat with others. Ah. Not bad, so I think saying nothing like that, oh, you're like, what thing? I don't understand. You are like, I thought you were being passionate because you normally relate with other people. If it comes from, from me, it don't just something like that. Because there are some people that are just spirits, not just, not just a praise. Not that he's naked, he don't do it yet, he just natural. So from that, he cannot be praised.
No. Amen. Amen. You know, these issues are practical issues. Like, a lot of persons have got, have gone through a lot of things from background because in literature we say that nobody, no writer writes in a vacuum. No actor asks in a vacuum. Whatever anybody is doing is from a earliest experience, either consciously or unconsciously. So there are people that every time someone has tried to show them love, it was for a reason. It was maybe to exploit them and it did not end well. So somehow, their, their psychology is tuned in that way. So once you tend to show them love, they already are the destination. They are like, this love is going to end in hurt. So they be, they, they, they refuse to be loved. And in such a situation, what should we do? She has said, continue, like, be persistent. That is our own solution. That is a sister. Let me take from my brother. Okay, you want to, let, let, give her, give her, let us. Hallelujah. Please, can you start handling hell? Hell questions right away. Hell.
Intentional of God.
Please, hell.
So because if there's an intention behind that action, it helps you to be persistent, it helps you to be focused. But when there is no intention that you are willing, you're just doing it because you just want to. What is the intention there is to prove this person has a price, to show this person has a price, to show this person has a price. Then you have to be intentional. And secondly, you have to think about it. There are some times that, when I go to a church, I miss some people. There's a particular guy I met and I was talking to him about this love of Christ. And he was like, they have been in church, but he mentioned in church, he was, he didn't take any work out. But there are things that he was expecting God to do for you. Especially in places where they preach to you and say, when you do this, you get this from church. So he has been in a place where things like that were taught as a doctor. And he had their book and was expecting something in this. And what he was expressing, which I didn't from that, he was working. So when I was talking to him, I was scared from bringing up this issue. So when I kept talking, I, I saw that he's trying to like, okay, this person knows the God he has been here. He's been acting and everything, at the point I think myself, there is no need to keep talking. And what I did was, I couldn't accept this discussion there. You know, say, ah, you don't want to connect me, you don't want to speak to me, you don't want to bring me to your church. I said, no, it is not for me, my job is not to be a pastor. My job is just to speak to you. So what I did was, I placed this name on my altar. Every morning I pray, thank God, I have spoken to this person about you. And this is, we are trying to serve you in this and that. I pray that you speak to his heart. So that is one other thing. And then another.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Let's, let's, thank you very much. So, he said, ah, when you have tried your best and the person is still not yielding, hand the person over to the one who sent you on the journey. And he knows how best to convey that person. Let me quickly say that, it may not be everybody that you preach to that will get saved by you. You know, all of us want to get to salvation point every time we are preaching. It, it may not always be so. It can happen sometimes or many a times, but there could be exceptions. Yours could just be to plant. Another has to be to water. And of course, you know that who gives the increase? It's God. It's God. So not, not say, no, if I preach to you, you must repent. If, if you know the, I don't come out here today, no, that, you are not the comforter. You are not. You don't do the work of God. Amen. You know, how they talk, they take on place, talk about, how can you serve others with humility with what you have? I think last year, last year, during this washing of feet, you are normally I post, and I had a talk with a Pentecostal. Why will you people, why will you come to church and be washing people's feet? I'm like, these are, they don't know the origin of what we do. So, so I, I gave the person the scripture. So, so I, I gave the person the scripture where Jesus washed the disciples' feet. And you know, they would talk, began to say a lot of things. That this, did Jesus say we should do? Did he say we should do it? That he did it doesn't mean we must do it. So I just took him on the journey back into the culture, the tradition of the people that led to that and what it actually means or what it signifies. And why we doing it is important. I said, if Jesus, if Jesus could come to the point, they would say stoop so low to wash his disciples' feet. He just tried to show us humility and how to serve, that even if you are a leader, you are a servant. So we as believers, no matter how graced we are, how anointed we are, you are still a servant with that gifts and that ability. So after the long talk and everything, they, they have never done this in my church before. I say, I know. And the person, now God, you understanding. And the person is, and he is a self member, by the way, now. Yes. So, this is how we can start with it. Alright, we go straight to, uh, memory verse.
Take your prayer.
Ephesians 5:1-2. Follow God's example therefore. Please say after me, follow God's example therefore.
Facilitators pray.
As dearly love children and walk in the way of love. Just as Christ loved us and gave himself up for us as a fragrant offering and sacrifice to God. Just in one minute, pray in your heart and say, Lord, help me to reflect your love and humility in all I do. And I will not just be a hearer, a speaker of these things, but a doer. Help me. For in Jesus' name we pray. Allah, we thank you for your word. We ask that you will help our hearts, that we will not just be hearers of these words, but we will also be doers. That in doing your word, we will find fulfillment and we will be true ambassadors that you have sent us to be. Thank you, Lord, for hearing us. Thank you. For in Jesus' name we are praying. Thank you. Please, I'll pass it. I'll pass this in paper and you write.
We saw from our studies that before you can be an ambassador, you must be in Christ. And that is why in 2 Corinthians 5:17, if a man be in Christ, he is a new creation. That creation is after the image of Jesus. Such that wherever you go and wherever you are, you portray and showcase the image of whom you are caring. We saw that the purpose for which we are in Christ and saved is to live for Him. And that our relationship with God is that He's our Father and He's our King. And as a Mary, we represent His purpose, His interests, not our own interests. Please, in order to do this, our message as a student, as a worker, and wherever you are, is the message of Christ. Jesus began a message of reconciling men to God. And while He is away, we are here to continue the same message and nothing else. There is no improvement on the message of Christ other than reconciling men to God. And we must live exemplary lives that when people see us, our teaching, our message will be the same with our lives. We are going to be consistent in our lives. Our character must be of a kingdom so that when they look at our behavior and watch our message, there will be no difference. We have authority from Jesus. He didn't send us into the world empty-handed. He gave us power and authority to discharge this message and confront opposing powers without being hurt. We must be conscious of our identity. We must be conscious of where we are coming from. We belong to a kingdom. Heaven is where we are coming from and that is where we are going to return to. We must be conscious of this, why we live on earth. This morning, two questions we must answer. Are you in Christ? That you came for this conference this morning? Are you born again? You cannot represent Christ if you are not in Christ. And number two, if you are reading Christ, is your life, is your interest, the focus of your existence, is it the kingdom? All your activities are detailed to bring praise and glory and profit to the kingdom of our Father. This morning, we have to pray. And I want you to join me to pray. Everywhere we are, can we pray with me? Say, Father, in the name of Jesus, thank you for choosing me as your ambassador. Oh Lord, help me to live the life that represents your love, your truth. Strengthen me to proclaim your message boldly in this world, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. God bless you. Please, all Bible study facilitators will be meeting at 3:30, immediately after the workshop, at 8:31 as usual. Please, if you're Bible study facilitator, you must be in that meeting. Please, thank you.
Thank you so much, Prof. and Bible study facilitators. Can we make a joyful noise to the Lord this morning? Dear people of God, for the miracle of sleeping and waking up, for the gift of life, can we just rise on our feet and say, thank you, Jesus? Please just keep standing for a minute. Can you lift up your right hand this way? Please, can I get your attention here? Can I get your attention here? Lift up your right hand this way. When I say Joshua generation, you say a place for Christ. When I say Joshua generation, you say decade of God's reign. Then when I say Joshua generation, you will say ambassadors for Christ. One more time. When I say Joshua generation, you say a place for Christ. Joshua generation, decade of God's reign. Joshua generation, ambassadors for Christ. Want to go? Joshua generation! Joshua generation! Joshua generation! Let's do it one more time so people around can hear us and come back to their seat. One more time. Joshua generation! Joshua generation! Joshua generation! Give the Lord a money shout!